Seven o'clock or seven oh one. Opening to me as you can see. Well, I can see everybody's here tonight, so attendance is easy. And how about if we move on to approval of the minutes from March fourth? Did everybody have an opportunity to look at them? Any comments, corrections, omissions? Doesn't sound like we have any comments, corrections, or omissions, so. Uh, could I have a motion to approve the minutes of March fourth?
Move to approve the minutes of March fourth.
Thank you, Kate.
Second.
Thank you. Who was the second? Oh, yeah, thank you. Uh, any further discussion on the minutes? All in favor say aye please.
Aye.
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 And those opposed say nay.
I guess I'll abstain since I wasn't here.
So it's five in favor and one abstention. Thank you. Alright, so our first business is a site plan application. It's from a Mr. Singh from sixty-six Hayes Road, tariff. Is there somebody here?
Yep.
How'd you like to come right up to the podium there? I don't know, do you have a slide or two of this?
I do, sure.
Great.
Sure. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, um, this is EC twenty-four oh three, sixty-six Hayes Road. It is a site plan application for an attached eight hundred square foot accessory dwelling unit on behalf of Mr. Singh. Um, if you do the math in our in our ordinance, we allow up to thirty percent is a maximum and thirty percent of uh the square footage of the house would be eight hundred and five total. And so this falls within that eight at eight hundred square feet of the primary dwelling, which is over twenty-six hundred square feet. Um, essentially, the applicant is proposing to um, to finish out the existing garage space and I'll let him kind of walk you through what exactly is going on. So here is um here's an aerial of of sixty-six and then kind of a front looking in at at the small single family house. Um, so maybe I'll just stop there and let Mr. Singh go and I've got other slides. If you want, you wanna go through the the living space area, I'd be happy to do that.
Sure, so thanks for your time. Um, my name is Jas and I have this garage and for years I didn't know what to do with it, you know, but my family visits a lot, uh, and they stay with me a lot, so I want to convert it into a living space. First floor, you know, we'll keep some, so first floors on the left. So we keep like the storage area for, you know, like lawn equipment and whatnot, still like that. And then we're thinking to connect the plumbing to the existing house on the bottom right there. You know, have a kitchen, a little bit of living space there. We'll put like a Morphe bed maybe, um, uh, and like a powder room downstairs. And then upstairs, it's sloped pretty much, so there's not a lot of like area. Um, so the left side is kind of closed off because the roof touches the floor. Um, and then we'll think to have a bedroom there. Um, and then a bathroom along the road. Parking, we have like plenty of parking, like the driver's here, so.
We can go back and see the aerial.
Uh, there's plenty of parking.
Are you gonna continue to use that left side to park your car? So, or is it storage or?
No, no car because um I'll just park the car outside. So it's just uh for storage.
But you're not taking the door out. The overhead door is staying.
The overhead door is staying for, you know, it's expensive. You know, so we'll leave leave the overhead door. I have a motorcycle which will park, I'll park in there. And then like catch bikes and take the long traffic. And keep the car outside.
It doesn't look big enough. Like the space you left isn't big enough for a car.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's a picture, uh, one of the photographs has a door open. You can see the back end of the car screen, yeah? With that wall that cuts off.
Yeah.
Yeah, the wall cuts off, yeah. There's not enough like, the car pulls like a little bit forward, you know.
It's just not deep enough.
It's not deep enough at this and like I have like other stuff, otherwise I'll have to put like something outside and I don't want to do that, so.
You're getting rid of one of the doors, alright? You just get.
One of the doors, yeah, we got, and I'll put something like similar so it doesn't look odd, you know.
So is there, is there any framing in there now for these petitions that are in your drawings? Or is it just one big open room?
Right now it's one bit with like those like like big like walls, you know.
Combs?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like right there, so like two or three, so.
Okay. Yeah.
And whoever built it, it's like built.
Well, you can see in one of your pictures that there's a the deck is down for the there is a second floor deck in there.
Yeah, there's a floor up there, yeah, 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 upstairs, yeah.
I got it.
So staff finding is that is that it it does meet those requirements set forth in section three dot five. The owner is obviously um owner occupied, there'll be the owner living there. Um, it meets the thirty percent, it does provide the one part of space that's required. Yeah, the the one through seven, it meets those, it meets those requirements.
I'm just curious, and I, I'm not objecting, I'm just curious. I was looking at the regulations. So we count finished space? Is that what the 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 house floor uh square footage is? We count finished, so
No.
even counting the basement? I'm saying.
Habitable, habitable space.
Livable or habitable.
Habitable, yes, that's, 'cause it doesn't really say, it just says.
The first staff report was perhaps a little unclear on what was being counted.
Okay.
We worked with both the applicant to clarify what was um what was included in their number.
Mm.
But also, we made a clarification in the staff report that we are not counting unlivable basement space. We're not counting garage as part of doing the calculation for the thirty percent.
Okay, so but I think I think that habitable is the part that I was wasn't clear on, so, okay.
It's not.
But actually, the regulation doesn't say habitable.
It doesn't say anything, that's why I was asking, yeah.
That's true. But it's on my list of potential text amendments for the future, yeah.
Yeah. Hmm.
But I I think of it as everything inside the outside walls.
That's.
Whether it's, you know, storage space or it's living space. It doesn't matter, it's real square footage, you know.
We can, we can certainly clarify that, how we do that at any point in time.
Anyway. Yeah. Yeah, but it hasn't been a big problem, I mean, what do you agree with something?
That, that, wow.
Yeah, okay. Does anybody have any other questions?
I thought that we have it, we do have a draft motion. You're interested in the draft motion?
Yeah.
We just put it on the screen.
Make the motion.
I don't know.
Since we're neighbors, I will make the motion. Um, uh, I move that the zoning commission approves application ZC number twenty-four dash oh three of Jas Garath. Uh, Singh, owner of site plan, site plan approval to permit a plus or minus eight hundred square foot attached accessory dwelling unit at sixty-six Hayes Road, assessors map J zero five, block one two seven, lot one seven zero, zone R fifteen. Uh, the commission finds that the application of four site plan has met the standards set in section
three point five and the site plan criteria in section eleven and is subject to the following conditions. Uh, an administrative zoning permit is required for construction. Project shall be developed in a substantial conformance with the plans received on March eighth, twenty twenty-four as part of the application.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Does anybody have further discussion? Then we'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye please.
Aye.
Aye. And opposed, opposed, say nay. Right, approval six to zero, so we're all set. Mr. Singh, good luck to you.
Awesome, thanks so much.
Yeah, alright.
Everything's on the way up.
Like, sometimes they say.
Okay.
So a- as promised, Mr. Chairman, we, uh, staff has come back to you um with uh the 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 bones, um, maybe more than that, of the draft inclusionary zoning text amendment. We we offer it not 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 with the intention that is that is the, it's the end of the process, but as a way to start the process. I think it's easier to kind of talk about nuts and bolts with with something in front of you. But I did want to just run through a couple of slides to kind of tell you what we were thinking about when we, when we did this, when Brittany and I did this, mostly Brittany, but. Um, just as a reminder, eh eh the recent plan of conservation and development, your your long range plan, as well as the affordable housing plan, have clear goals. And and those goals um are to increase affordable housing units in the town of St. Petersburg. And one way to do that, and this was a specific resi- recommendation of the P O C D, was to consider and adopt an inclusionary zoning ordinance, uh, an inclusionary zoning regulation. And when we say inclusionary zoning, what we mean is that any residential development project would have a requirement to provide some level of affordable units as part of the entire project. And when we define affordability, we mean sixty percent of of A M I or eighty percent of A M I, but but below market as a uh as a parameter. And so this is what we tried to do in the draft. So we are suggesting, I think some of this began with with some of the guidance you gave, but I I I don't think it was um the kind of um final guidance, but I think this is where we start. So we have drafted language that say um affordable units would be required in any residential development over nine units. And that fifteen percent would be the number that would be required. So fifteen percent of uh the total number. Uh, we've drafted it consistent with the with the eight thirty G statute, which suggests that or which requires that half of those, half of that fifteen percent be for citizens or residents making up to sixty percent of area median income. And half uh for those making eighty percent of area median income. And the draft would 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 apply this to all subdivisions in site plans, whether they be owner occupied or fee simple or renter occupied for a period of forty years with a deed restriction. And this is the language that comes, comes really right out of the eight thirty G statute. Um, we we recommended even distribution across any development. And we really mean an even distribution by location within the development, by the types of units that are offered. So if there's a mix of units, that they be offered evenly in all of um, in in all of that mix and unit type, for instance. Uh, and that uh an affordable housing plan be filed at the time of either that subdivision or that site plan for review, which would kind of lay out uh the reporting process and um kind of the math that's required to 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 uh to establish a minimum sale price or a minimum uh or a minimum rental price for those units. We also included, 'cause this was asked by the commission, uh, what what I'm calling a sliding scale alternative. I don't know if there's a better way to say it. So we also included some alternative language that could um that could require more affordable units for bigger bigger projects. It's easiest way to say that, so. We s- and these are, these are numbers we can talk about and try to try to hone down as we go forward. But we said for developments between nine and twenty units, fifteen percent, anything over twenty-one units, twenty percent. And then all of those other same things apply, um. Deed restriction period, those type of things. Um, I I apologize for the uh for the font. I went in and made the font bigger, but I I we did, Brittany went and and we had some information in our first memorandum about about like communities or other places that have done this. We we drilled it down just a a little bit further to to try to show really com- comparable comparable or compatible or kind of sister communities that are that are similar to us. And um it was not, not in the staff report, but so Ridgefield and Canton and Darian and Tolland and New Canaan and Greenwich and um, just kind of walk you through what they have. They, you know, they establish a minimum number of 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 units where it would be required. And as you can see, the ra- it ranges from fourteen percent, fifty percent, fourteen percent, five percent, fifteen percent, fifteen percent. So kind of below what what we're proposing in our ordinance, right, in our regulation right now. But again, it's it's something we can, we can kind of chat about, uh, those.
If you just read those again, I can't read, see that.
Yeah, I, I, you know what.
Just bring them down.
In a sec, you know what I'll do? Watch this. Let's uh.
Ah, look at you.
I don't know if I can go to two hundred, you might, we might lose uh, we might lose it. Yeah, so, yeah, I'll probably do this way.
Almost fourteen, fifteen.
Uh, that's nothing worse. Alright, so we'll take Ridgefield. Ridgefield um requires affordable units in um anything, uh, any projects over five units. And they require fourteen percent affordable units. They uh apply it to all of their zones except their large lot single family zones. So they have zones that have two and three acre single family and they do not apply it to those zones. And they use, uh, they do not use the sixty and eighty, they only use the sixty or the eighty percent threshold. So um, if you go to Canton, six or more units at fifteen percent, they were, they are applying them in all zones and they um, they have established half at sixty and half at eighty. Although Brittany, if you'd explain, they, I think they've got a variance process as well.
Right, so after speaking with the assistant town planner in Canton, um, after this ordinance was passed, there was a development that applied. Um, couldn't make the sixty per- half sixty percent feasible financially. So last I spoke to the assistant town planner, they were going to uh submit a variance application.
So it's not built into their reg, it's, it, they just went through a variance process, okay?
Yeah. I'm I'm just curious, are these all, like, are these, have these been, these um regulations been established? Or have they, with the whole eight thirty G thing that's been going on, have they recently redone them to this? Do you know?
They, these have been recently established, um.
Well, not not all, I mean Greenwich has had a, had a requirement for 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 quite some time, yeah.
Greenwich has had, that's what I was gonna say, Greenwich, yes, but of um.
Cam was October.
Canton is really recent.
The rest are twenty twenty.
Ridgefield is twenty-three, I, twenty twenty-three, I think, right, June of twenty-three is the article we just read this afternoon.
Twenty-three.
Yep.
Yep.
Um, Tolland is more recent as well.
Okay. But Greenwich only applies to their business zones.
Yep, they, that's right, so they, they, you know, Greenwich has, you know, a a lot more mixed views than 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 we do here.
Yes.
So so Darian four, uh, anything over four, fourteen in all zones and eighty percent. Tolland, um, ten or more at five percent, all zones, and I think at eighty percent. So you can kind of see that pattern, kind of honing in around fifteen percent. And not everywhere is uh you know, there's only one place that is that is opening up to sixty. And I think that'll, that you you'll see a recommendation I have in a second or two about, you know, how do we get kind of that feedback from the development community and really try to understand what sixty really means for market rate development and what that, that burden could be. It's worth worth kind of trying to understand that.
Do we have any, is there any precedent for um any kind of incentives to help with like um um a mixed use that would have some low income or affordable, I should say, housing as part of, like, is there any kind of, I don't think that you could compel people to do a residential project that they weren't planning to do. But, you know, you look at some bigger businesses that we might want to be bringing, you know, business into town. And then is there anybody that's having incentive programs to like putting an affordable, a couple affordable units above a business, for example? Or that sort of thing when something's being built? Does anybody have anything like that?
Didn't see for mixed use, the only, some of the only incentives I saw was um more of more units allowable, like density bonuses.
Yeah.
I I don't recall seeing, and Greenwich would be the only one that I would think may have something like that, but I don't, I I don't recall it being.
'Cause this would apply to like a, I just didn't know if it would even be feasible that like a business could offset, maybe it's hard enough being a business with a new building, but like a business could offset the cost of affordable housing just in like a commercial aspect to a resident, like it's combined residential commercial, but it doesn't have a it doesn't have a non-affordable component at all. It's just a business and affordable, right?
I mean, even in that case, uh, bonus density is what is what most most places use. And again, I, it it it's something, it's something, something worth talking about for us. As I think I said in our our previous meeting, that is, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't have a lot of density caps.
No.
We we don't have density requirements, and so it's hard to, I think having a separate conversation about what what are incentives and what could they possibly look like? Um. So just hold that thought for one sec, yeah.
Yeah.
I did, um, we're starting at nine, why? I may have, I've forgotten what we discussed, two weeks ago.
I think you guys said nine.
You said nine, okay.
I think that's what you meant.
I was one of these.
There's gotta be some number to start with, right? I mean, I.
Alright, 'cause I just noticed that uh most of the others, the comparables you had up there were fewer than nine.
Yeah, I mean, it makes, it's small, it's it's really hard for small projects. It's really, really difficult for small pro- projects, just because of the 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 economy of scale. It makes it, it just makes it more difficult.
So if we had adopted this nine limit, uh, say a few years back, how, what, do you know what percentage of new developments that would have covered in town? Be a significant number?
It, I mean, it it would, it would have covered, obviously, your your your, the your major apartment complexes, we have at least three or four of those.
Three.
Um, a couple of subdivisions, um, depending how far you you went back. I mean, there's certainly stuff in in in, there's Nelson stuff.
The activity's slow, including Nelson's thing down here.
It 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 has, but certainly.
Interest rates were the issue, though, not.
Between ten and sixteen, though, we've built a lot of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Mm.
Twelve and eighteen, we've, we've certainly built a, a thousand units in the community for sure.
Right.
So this is fifteen percent proposed. We have the workforce housing overlay, and that's twenty percent. And there's no restriction on that. To Tony's point, it doesn't, starts at zero. Twenty percent of all.
Correct. We've had z- one workforce housing. We've had one project use that. It's, it's um
Okay.
It's, it's not applicable across town. It's got, it it's only allowed within seven hundred feet of uh Hot Meadow Street.
Water sewer.
Water sewer, so.
But that's what we wanted.
Yeah, yeah, and we got one.
But you're proposing these, the new regulation, would go where? Where would it be different?
And and George isn't proposing that. We're using that for the whole discussion.
It could go anywhere. Could go anywhere. New subdivision, new development, anywhere.
On. On well and septic?
Uh, it's hard to, uh, no. Well, yeah, yes, it could go on well and septic, why not? What's, just an affordable unit, of course it could.
So why not?
Why not?
I I doubt that you would try to put like a ten unit thing on like one septic se- I care, I'm not a I work septic, but I, not that much of an expert. I doubt that there would be that many that try to do that on septic. It would probably be weird to put that up.
Let me, let me finish, let me finish. I may hit some of the questions, um, as I, as I finish. So, a cou- a couple of things that just, I I I'd like you to think about, maybe it's also in response to, and Jackie had asked a couple of very good questions. And we did a little bit of deep dive on what, you know, uh, what homeownership meant and and how do you reap uh, you know, profit or increases in your house. So we did look at the question of homeownership as a wealth builder. And i- it does appear that 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 most places who do this do re- you know, do require it in all, in all units. If it, if it was a single family development on on small lots, let's say. Um, but they tie that, they they tie the profit to A M I increase. So if you bought your house in uh in twenty seventeen, A M I, uh, I'm just gonna, I don't have the numbers in front of me. So so our area median income then was, let's say it was eighty thousand dollars, right? So at eighty thousand dollars, there was a a max price for the house. In twenty twenty-one, that A M I is now a hundred and one thousand dollars, so that max price is higher.
Hmm.
It is, it's essentially tied to A M I. Yeah, if A M I doesn't grow, then the house price can't grow. But A M I has grown, and so that's how, that's how a an affordable home can be sold at some um moderate profit for that that homeowner.
Okay, well, there's two different things there. So I get that the price of the house might change, I get that. So three years, four years later, the house price went up, but how does that person get that? I thought they were restricted, when they sell, they have to sell for what they bought for.
No, no.
So you're saying they could get the difference?
Absolutely.
Awesome, okay.
That's absolutely the case.
They would be selling for eighty percent of the, like, if they bought for eighty percent of the income, then they would be able to sell for eighty percent of the inflated income.
But that number has changed, right? So that house price
Right.
it, that house price, the house price kind of tracks with A M I.
Yeah.
So the house, that eighty percent, that that house was three hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars in twenty fifteen.
Mm.
Now it's three hundred and fifty-three thousand, and so, and they get that.
But I still question like how they would be able to, like, I still, like, that is such a challenge, but like how I mean, there must be examples of this happening, but I would imagine these houses becoming significantly disheveled and everything because every investment that you put in to a a house like that, you're never recouping. Like, you're not, like, inflation isn't going up at the rate of like putting in a new kitchen after twenty years. And unless you get out after five, but then when you get out after five, you don't have enough money to then go buy in theoretically to buy another house because you didn't like make market rate on that house. So the person who's buying in that situation has a home, but they're always forever behind.
That's exactly, that's the hopeless.
Well, if you know what I'm asking, and I, this is probably just my ignorance, but who tracks this? So I buy a house, I mean, no, I'm really like.
We talked about this.
Okay, yeah, like I buy a house and I I, you know, I get this at this this eighty percent. Who's gonna, who's gonna track that I don't turn around and sell it for market value?
Well, it's deed restricted.
It's on.
So your lawyers, I mean, it would be a violation of a number of laws if your your lawyers overlooked those.
Oh, it's on the date, okay. And I'm not saying I was going to.
Potentially.
I just, I didn't understand, no, probably okay.
But the answer is that even though we have reporting mechanisms that are written into these affordable plans, so we have, we have two in this town. We've got Cambridge Crossing, these are fee simple, for sale, affordable projects. Cambridge Crossing and Hendricks Lane, whatever we call Hendricks Lane. On Macs Road, whatever it's called.
Mac's Road, yeah.
Yeah, um, and it says that there is an annual reporting mechanism. But the fact is, is that is, that works perfectly when I've got a single owner, when I have an apartment complex. Those folks file regularly. But when you have now, at at Hendricks Lane, let's just say, twenty-five individual property owners who sell their house and they do not tell the town when they're selling their house, they go and close. Um, it's very difficult to 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 figure that out.
Hmm.
But what I do is I go back and I look at all those, at at, again, there's not that many units, right? It's four, it's five units in Hendricks Lane and it's four units in Cambridge Crossing that are constructed today. So I I go and check those to see if they're sold. And what would I do? Send, uh, send the property owner a letter.
Okay.
It just reminds them of the requirement.
But one would think if you have a lawyer working through the sale, they're going to advise you.
But. Yeah.
They pulled the deed.
Right, so, and I, you know, Jackie made a good point, and I think I I tried to kind of jump on that point as well. I, I would just be careful about spending too much energy on single family homeownership. There, we're not, we just don't have open ground in this town to build subdivision after subdivision after subdivision. In fact, what I would, what I would.
That's what's needed. That's the product that's needed the most right now.
There's no ground. We're, we're, we, we can't make new ground.
Increasing single family development is gonna increase sprawl, which is has a lot of negative downstream effects, traffic being a big one, it increases uh the car necessity. Um, and I, I.
But we don't really have enough land available to have sprawl, I mean.
Well, that's, well, that's exactly right. I mean, all the, all the farmlands.
We do, we're definitely on these that we're proposing for the inclusion.
Well, there's infill uh development, uh, there's anywhere around our uh our downtown, there's plenty of spaces.
Yeah, I think there are infills.
I would say that in what limited space we have, large sprawling single family subdivisions are probably not gonna be a good use of our existing space, especially.
Doesn't have to be large sprawling.
Well, the single family, like, so, so you think like terrafill, right? You think uh uh on Hayes Road, actually.
Perfect.
Those are very, very small, uh, single family homes, and I, starter homes for some people.
Quarter meter.
Uh, and I think that those are probably never coming back, would be my guess. In, I, I don't know that.
For you, don't they?
I mean, housing is getting smaller. It's not like people, you know, got like the nineties when we were building the
Yeah.
three to five thousand square foot houses, tho- those, that's not what is getting built now. I mean, I think that that is, that, that, like, things are coming down. I don't know if they're gonna come down to a cape, but I mean, I think that is something that the town is trying to do.
Well, and, and the environmental concerns are never, and and are not gonna go away. In the macro scale, single family homes are the least sustainable type of development you can have.
So and remember, just, if I could just kind of sober us up, sorry, real quick, just remember what we're trying to do here. This is one tool
Yeah.
of many potential tools, and this tool in particular would require private development community to provide affordable units when and if they develop anywhere in our community.
Does it count for a cheat, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So let me ask. Oops.
Yeah, no, please.
Yeah, no, I wrote it down.
Go ahead.
Um, so to that end, what about, we were talking about incentives a little bit earlier. So is there any known incentive or grant for um repurposing currently existing e- empty buildings? So I'm thinking of like the yellow building next to Cumberland Farms, gasp. And like, even, you know, Canes is empty. I'm, I'm, I know that there are other factors there, but.
So so the incentives could be, they don't exist yet, and this is one of the things we probably should talk about, is that you know, we don't, again, we don't, we don't really have. we we don't have the availability to do duplexes anywhere, for instance, cause we call them multifamily units. So an incentive could be, if you allowed duplex units or attached, you know, a a attached duplex or triplexes as part of, you know, redeveloping a an abandoned or a vacant structure, could be an incentive to some affordability. We just don't allow it, I mean, yeah, I guess we probably allow it in center zone, probably allow it in center zone.
I was just gonna say, because again, the Iron Horse Inn, that was very easily.
Probably in center. Probably, probably in center zone, so we did.
So I have a question about, my question wasn't too far from yours, Shannon, and it was using Iron Horse Inn as an example.
Yeah.
I was trying to understand how would this apply to a project like that where they were converting like a hotel into a residential residential units? Like would something like this apply in the future?
It had more than nine units, it had more than nine units, I would suggest it would.
It did, if it was sixteen, yeah, I think so.
It it would apply to a new, it would apply to a a a conversion project.
Yes, it would, any new per- any new permit.
So, I mean, personally, I I would like to explore that, I'm just sharing with all.
Yeah, great.
Um because I feel like we've we've reached this point with development. Um and and the last couple go rounds we've had with developers have been met with a lot of resistance um from the the town, um among other things. So I think we have the potential, I I'm I'm saying this not as an an architect or anything. But I, you know, I drive up and down Hot Meadow Street two hundred times a day and see these empty facilities that I feel like we could be doing something with.
I I think there's room to add that specific language in our ordinance, you know, if it's a conversion.
I would.
It this this also applies to any conversion of something into nine, you know, or more residential units, or if we wanted to change a number. So I think that's, and I've seen other towns also have that language. And it's not specifically saying you get an incentive for, but it's just specifying that that is, that's a project that could apply to this, this ordinance.
But just, let me point out that we're, what we're trying to do is is I identify some of the scenarios, some of the strategies that are associated with what we need to do. Get more affordable housing.
Mm. Right.
We're not really at a stage where we wanna start rolling things in and out.
I'm not, no, and I and I'm not proposing anything specific.
But. We need eventually to come to, you know, one, we can get our arms around and get going. And you know, we're not gonna be able to start three or four at the same time.
Mm.
I'm not, I'm just offering an observation from my standpoint.
Of course.
Mm.
Uh we need to kind, I'm not trying to hurry the discussion tonight, but we what we're looking for is to get at some point focused on some of this.
Right.
So so we have, we're sorry.
And 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 of course, I I see that, but I I mean, I also see, we already have this. Like we we already have empty buildings and we have, you know, it could may, maybe it could be something, you know, we talked last time about
Yeah.
low hanging fruit.
Mm-hmm.
And sustainable.
Yeah, well.
I love this idea.
You're speaking my language, and you're you're talking about incentivizing infill, in infill development. That is, that is absolutely my own thing. Um but I w- I would say that attaching it to this discussion is, it's it's a different discussion. I think the 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 inclusionary zoning is just one thing that we can knock out. I think it's gonna be much more of a conversation to try to figure out ways to incentivize that infill in some of those empty lots that you're talking about.
So those are two different discussions, is what you're saying.
I think they have to be two different discussions.
I think that's probably right, I I think it probably is.
But there is.
But there there's different tactics to the same end.
I I I think if if any, if there's any connection, it's being like, hey, infill can be twelve percent incentivi- fifteen.
Or it could or it could be fifteen.
To incentivize it.
Well, the incentivizing, there's there's whole lots of things you can do with incentivizing.
Yeah.
I think just blanket saying it's all gonna be fifteen percent affordable, means no matter what we decide later on, we're at least getting that fifteen percent. Um which I think is something we wouldn't wanna put off to try to, you know, perfect enemy of the good or whatever. I think getting this on the books now is gonna help us so much.
So yeah, I mean, that's fair.
So Tucker and Kate, on that, for the iron horse building, that was, I think, successfully converted, right?
Mm-hmm.
It was an old hotel made into luxury downtown in the center.
Mm-hmm.
If we applied this, the fifteen percent, would they be able to get their funding? Cause my understanding, it's very difficult. So that is all done, that's, we can see it's a real project.
So so if if you, yeah. So what I would suggest you do is I would suggest we invite local stakeholders to the next meeting.
Um that that.
That is a big.
Cause I like to make this real.
And I might suggest some of these people.
Oh, I love that, I love it.
It needs to be.
I might suggest some of these people, including Mr. Paulian, Bruce, and Ben Goodenbauer, um the Iron Horse Apartments.
Yay!
It's to kind of have a conversation about the burdens and what's doable.
That's right.
I had a long conversation with Chris Nelson today, he is very interested, but also very concerned about. And he wants to kind of help walk us through what, you know, not, I want to, not, he doesn't wanna open his books to us, but he wants to kind of walk us through. This is the cost of the land, and this is the cost of our materials, and this is what it's gonna cost us in order to get this rent, so.
So if it's not feasible, that's it.
I definitely wanna hear what they would say.
And that's why the sixty percent I had in my last slide, I think what we've heard is sixty, sixty percent becomes a real challenge for the private developer.
Thank you.
A real challenge in making the numbers work, so.
So I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask a somewhat controversial question.
That would be awesome.
Again.
But if in town, we have a a large pr- uh population that doesn't really want any additional development, is it so horrible for us to say, well, oh well? You know, if they, I mean, I don't wanna be anti, you know, all that, but and I would certainly like to talk with the developers and hear that. But is it the worst thing in the world if they can't meet that, that we go, oh well, sorry?
They can't meet what?
Well, it's kind of, it's kind of, it's kind of counter to the to the P O C D adopted policy that says we wanna increase the number of affordable units.
They can't meet the victims instead of the, the, you know. Okay. That's why I said, I know you guys have a personal, just asking.
And it puts us, and it puts us in risk of of the predatory developers by not trying to work out something with the developers that are successful in town.
Right.
Okay.
There's no way.
But I mean, I agree, like you can't make it so the developer can't, we can't make it impossible for the developers either
I know, same.
because we need to be able to cultivate and bring in the good developers that we want if we're gonna say there's developers that are not developing the way that we want, right?
Hmm, okay, no, I hear you, I hear you.
The last large development we had offered us fifteen percent without the seeming being in place.
Mm-hmm.
I think they could, I would be surprised if they offered us something we didn't want. They can. W- but what I'm saying is that they could aff- they could afford the fifteen percent, they thought they were gonna make money.
Yeah.
So the guy was a huge scaled project, can you afford fifteen at nine units? I don't know, you know.
Exactly, that's it.
But Kate, that was my point.
So so and and so the reason, the reason I would say, let's, I would suggest doing that now.
On the workforce.
I mean, this doesn't need to be, you know, congressional testimony, but I do think it helps craft the language. I I just, I wouldn't wanna wait till public hearing.
To bring them in, no, I think it's great, that would be great.
I think it helps, it helps get the stakeholders in, and I would, again, I would, um and this is not an exhaustive list, but I mean staff's gonna manage it, so we're the one that's gonna be doing the inviting. But you know, I would suggest some local builder developers, and and then I would also suggest advocates, you know, folks on the side of housing advocacy who sometimes, you know, can can play a little bit of a foil to the development community, say, well, you know, really, you can do it this way maybe. And so I I I.
Are you suggesting at the same time that we would have?
Yes, yeah, do it all one night. It doesn't, they're not, you're not getting there.
We should bring in a popcorn machine.
They.
Doing us.
This way you'd be able, you know, you kind of ask them to do a two minute presentation, and then you can ask them questions about, hey, help us, help us try to craft this.
Sublease.
But I agree.
I think, I think it's a really good way to do this.
What about a bank?
So yeah, I I how do we, how do we, how do we handle the lending side of it? I I I.
Could you ask like Chris Nelson or Luke or somebody, like if anybody would be willing to join? Because that's the third piece of this, if nobody's willing to.
Yes, so that's a good idea. Yeah, no, lending is a whole different question, right?
If nobody's willing to lend on it, like this is a non.
Yeah, that's great, a great point.
Thanks.
Hmm, interesting.
Yes, it's, so so I I I we, Brittany and I are happy to answer more questions about what we drafted. And we think that what we drafted is the bones of what your your ordinance is gonna look like, your reg is gonna look like that. The numbers, percentages, those kinds of things are are going to change, but that's what it's gonna look like. It's it's not, it's not that complicated, you know, the the numbers, but it's, the complication is 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 the nuance.
The implementation.
Okay, so this work session would be just about the the inclusionary zoning regs?
Yes, yeah, I would, I would, I mean, don't don't you, don't you think, I mean, don't you, I I don't you think we ought to keep it, keep it, you know,
That's a no, Tucker, we don't need any of that. One.
keep it on on one lane with guardrails?
Yes.
Sure, I'd ju- just say, yeah, like bringing these kinds of groups back as well for uh different discussions on like the infill on that concept is gonna be there on.
So you know, I'm I'm hoping that the 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 Board of Selectment Housing.
It's true too.
Well, you know, Affordable Housing Committee that they're gonna panel will will hopefully do more of the big picture stuff. But if they're not going to, then we're gonna do the work on the things that we, I would suggest that we do the work on the things that are within your zoning world. And this is, this is, this is one of them, no one else can adopt an inclusionary housing ordinance uh regulation
That would.
that you, that is, that is on your field to do.
Right. Could we also include um the Aging and Disability Commission as the advocate, as an advocate group?
Oh.
Sure.
That's great.
I think that would be.
Yeah, this, again, it's not exhausted, but again, like to do it in one night, keep it manageable.
Yeah, right, like Ed Lamontagne would be a great spokesperson for that.
Yes.
Yeah, I I, yes.
Um and when we do this, is it possible to do it in a um in like a more
Yes.
casual productive forum, where we're like seeing, I don't know, I just, I like, I feel like this is so hard to do, I feel like when we're really trying to like roll up our sleeves.
Like a table, round table, yeah.
Yeah.
Like this is great when we're like, we're gonna vote, but
Yes.
we can set it up, I just wanted to put that out there, so we plan ahead for setting it up in a more round table fashion for that.
Yes.
Totally agree.
Yes. Yes.
Thank you.
I'm happy to answer, we're happy to answer more questions, we've done a bunch of work on this.
And it's just been saying, I, you know, there's the stakeholders, I think need a little broader definition than just the builders. Um so I think we have twenty five thousand.
Sure. Give me some ideas that that makes it manageable.
They're going to Simmsbury.
Well.
Don't forget them, and so uh not at the end.
You, you are looking for expertise at this point, though, and not opinion, that that would, I I would, I would make that distinction.
Yes, probably. Yeah, yeah.
Well, Bruce, anybody's welcome to come, you know, but I think, I, no, I think it's for us to have a discussion first.
Yeah, I would not make it a public in session, I would, I I, this is, I'm sorry, it's an invitation.
Get out of hand.
Yeah.
I I would strongly, and if you've got ideas on that, who that that could be expanded to be as stakeholders, we obviously will do what you ask us to do. Um we're trying to keep it manageable, and and again, have have experts opine about this at this point.
Right, and so when uh when would you propose doing this?
I would, I, you know, I either on the first or the fifteenth.
How about when the majority of these people are available?
Well, I'm not gonna do a special meeting.
No, but one of, whatever date is better for the most amount.
Yeah.
First.
Of course, I mean, I kinda like to keep it moving, so, yes, understood.
Yeah, oh, no, understood.
We have momentum, so we should keep it going.
And you know, I don't have any, you know, big stuff on on our plate, um.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if they can't make the first one, let's see if we can get them to.
Application wise. Yeah, we of course we do that, yeah, we would just say it's on the first, and nobody could attend.
Especially Silverman's in New Jersey.
Is it coming?
Oh, they'll be happy to come.
Not everyone has to be able to.
No, I just, that that's, I mean, I I think I've got the um local developer builder list down, I mean, nobody else is, I don't know else there is.
That's good.
Mm-hmm, alright.
But then in addition to the builders, there's.
I think it sounds like a great idea.
Yes, Lamontagne and.
Yeah, so I I put them under ad- the advocates group, yeah.
Oh, the advocates group, okay, well.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we have a question from the audience.
Oh yeah, are Ray and I allowed to come to this meeting, cause I know something's in the public, but he wants to listen to it.
No, it's public meeting, all our meetings are public.
It's a public, it's a public meeting, right.
Yeah, you're all open to the public, it's just not all for public comment.
This is.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, there's no opportunity, except when there's a public hearing.
Sure, okay, thank you.
Always interactive.
I love that, yeah.
Yeah.
Ray, why, I'm, I'll, Ray, why don't you go ahead and say hello, and and show everybody why you're here?
Yes.
Wait, yes, oh, great.
The reason why I came today is because I'm very invested in this town and I really think this is a great idea, and I wanted to see what you guys do, I don't know, not good to be here.
You're pretty good.
That was pretty good. That was pretty good.
Thank you for coming.
Most adults know what you guys do, so.
Sure.
Yeah.
It's amazing, how old are you?
I'm right up there.
I am eleven years old.
Amazing, thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming.
We're really glad for you.
We're really glad for you.
We hope to see you have more meetings.
Have you figured out what we're doing up here?
Could you let us?
You don't know either, right?
Just talking.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Again, I don't, that's all I got.
Okay, is that it, Mr. Chair?
I'm ready.
Awesome.
Anybody have any comments? Pretty nice on this topic.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I'd be happy to, there's a pretty key in with the advocacy community, I'd be happy to give you a couple other.
Okay, and so you're gonna try to tee this up for as soon as you can arrange it, right?
Yes.
Sounds good. So I don't think we need a motion on that.
I don't think you do, that's.
Consensus, go forward. Then um in terms of any other business that we need to deal with tonight, hearing none, could I have a motion to adjourn?
Alright, we'll make the motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
For the discussion, all in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay, it's six to zero, so all set for tonight, thank you for coming.